Yes. No setting against.
Yeah, it wasn't the same day anymore.
Listen, I mean, nothing's stopping us from doing this a lot quicker. That's what I think they could just say.
Very quick to make your point.
Yeah.
Yes. Education, discuss educational advice. Climate's now seven thirty. Begin the meeting, call the meeting will be called to order. I might have noticed that tonight's meeting has been provided in accordance with the Public Meetings Act by the following methods. Distribution of notice to the record, posting an agenda on the school district website, through Parent Square, on the Board of Ed's Facebook page, and on various Leonian listservs. Please rise for the.
Ms. Jesus.
Here.
Mr. Parker. Ms. Rockham. Mr. Zepka.
Here.
Mr. Sago.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Wild.
Here.
Vice President Hellman.
Here.
And President Lake.
Here.
We have a call on tonight's meeting. Also, in attendance is our superintendent schools, Dr. Gavins, as well as our assistant superintendent of schools, Dr. Caramanos, as well as our board attorney, Mr. Lepera. And we have all three student reps in attendance, Hannah Choi, Emily Gelbord, and Renee Kim.
Thank you. Just please let the record reflect that Ms. Choi did contact me and she's away from business. So that brings us to our first public comment here. Comment section on any agenda related items. If you wish to speak, please step up to the podium, quiet your game, and address. You have two minutes. Yes, please.
Arthur's at one twenty-five row design. A couple of things since I've had most of my questions answered publicly. I have a question regarding the whiteboards that are going to the superintendent's office. I want just a question. Why were regular whiteboards type ordered instead of the newer electronic ones where you can kind of hit the button? Get the print out of it and they're Wi-Fi connectable. It seems to be that that would be, I know they're more expensive, but that's not a matter of cost. It's a matter of why those were ordered instead of what I said. It seems to have a better functionality. I think the storage, the cost of storing records is something that needs to be addressed. It's about ten thousand dollars a year paying for records. And I'm not sure whether they have to be stored separately from the town or the town has a storage records for which problem. When they vacate, borrow a ball or if they, if they vacate, I don't think they know what they're doing. But if they do, then perhaps that'll create an opportunity for location storing. If you, or get rid of it, it depends, you know, going for records is a tedious task of keeping some, turning which one you have to keep. So it's something that's, we're just paying somebody for, for space. As I got to, was anyone here on the council, on the board, when Joanne passed the, got the building built, the annex? Somebody, were you, were you on the board?
I was like.
When the annex was approved and built? Well, you were here, you would have been, you would have known. Okay. Well, the previous board, you know, I come to a lot of these meetings and that previous board I recommended since they're going to build a structure, they build it, stress it for a second level because of shortages of space, all kinds of stuff. There's a lot of issues that, but it was not taken up because for a lot of reasons, one of which was expense at the time and then the need to go out for a referendum and all that other stuff. But had we done that, you know, had that advice, that recommendation, which was mine, been taken, then you would have plenty of space for that stuff as well as with the big also at minimal construction costs. You really need to pay attention to, you know, thinking long, you know, instead of here and now, I want to bring in on something. So I'm not saying anybody here does, does do that. So that was that. And the last thing is the health records. I noticed that the nursing instructions are pretty good detail they went through. The one other thing that struck me, it came up as, was a lot of information kept on students, as there should be, health information. The question that came on mind is the security and safety of that information now and into the future. Should, should it be hacked or should it be mishandled? It could come out five years from now, ten years from now, and it was open to lawsuit, so you know, from something happened fifty years ago. As we know, it could be a problem. And that is, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the public?
It's your chance.
Any other who would be able to. Board of Ed comments. Start with responses to that. Whiteboards in the superintendent's office.
Sure, sure. So if I understand it correctly, the question is, why go with a traditional analog board as opposed to getting like one that you could write on and like the more Wi-Fi technical one? Yeah, I, I've never, I'm an old school whiteboard guy. Put it up, write it down, record it, take a photo if I have to save it.
I'm old school too.
Yeah, yeah, I've never, I mean, I, I've never needed nor, nor used one of those. I'd rather have that be in a classroom if it was going to be there. So I've never really thought to have that. So I just have a standard whiteboard in my office.
Okay, I just, you know, you've got this fantastic flow chart and arrows and diagrams are up there. You want to save it, you know, you hit the button and it saves it.
I'm like a dog looking at the radio.
Okay.
I'm like a lion. Yeah.
Use your phone, take a picture.
Exactly. Oh, no, good. And, you know, give me, give me colored, give me colored markers and, and, and up it goes. Yeah, but thank you, I appreciate you, you bringing that up. And the second thing is in regards to the nursing services plan, what we have to have there. So that, to your point, the idea of having, very, very important, that information is either stored in password protected files or in locked cabinets. We're also discussing in the district, and this is going to go up the next few weeks, I'm going with multi-factor authentication for access to the district servers where you log in in your phone. Also, we have a meeting on, that is on Friday morning, no, no, next Tuesday morning. Tuesday morning with our director of technology about that, about the MFA. So we have that. So, but to your point, that information is either in hard copy locked away or it's behind a bathroom.
Helps, don't help them, they say records have to be kept for like forever.
Yeah.
So there's got to be a long-term locker, right, secure.
Which I think to that point, and I don't want to lead into Mr. Thomas, when he answers your questions about the storage, that plays a role in our storage also, that some files have to be kept perpetually. So.
Yeah, I'll pay you back. So basically with the retention, I mean, we looked at this heavily because of certain information that we were needed to retrieve prior years, going back really far. So one of the areas that the district was currently storing the records was, you know, the basement at LMS because of the storage, you know, free storage, you know, free areas that we could store. The only area was in the basement of LMS, which is heavily susceptible of humidity, water flooding, you know, water line that runs, you know, the main water line that runs through the, you know, middle school. So because of the retention requirements that all districts have to keep pertaining to, you know, retention schedules on certain records, it was recommended that, you know, we didn't have sufficient space currently, so we had to move it into a proper facility that maintains, you know, humidity regulated. They review retention schedules for destruction. So unfortunately, you know, there is obviously a cost for that, but, you know, we have to be complying with state requirements. You know, but that is something, you know, long-range facility plan, you know, as we're thinking about expanding and building, you know, a storage facility is something that, you know, we would incorporate in, in any construction, just to bring, you know, the records back. The other plan is what we're trying to do with any permanent files, we're trying to digitize it. This way we can move it outside our storage fee, but there is an initial expense that, you know, we can't incur in, in, in the first year. So we got to, you know, kind of figure out which ones that we keep permanently, that we could kind of take out of, you know, hard copies.
Yeah, also about the, you know, these type of places, they're not just storing the file, they're sorting it. And also, you mentioned that these ties there. So then, then I keep just like, oh, those files are not for, just like a special, no, it's not. It has to be like, okay, sometimes, sometimes we may have to retrieve it, like, you know, insurance policies like that.
Yeah.
So when they install it and then they, these ties in, because they have the specs.
I'm familiar with the records protection. I, I am for a very much.
Yeah.
So one of, one of, yeah, one of the things.
So like Mr. Parker saying, just to piggyback, also this company, the fee that we're paying for is file sorting. So in, in the middle school, you know, there was no internal software that we were like, if we needed to find something from a different year, literally you would have to go through every box and kind of scan it. This basically has, it has the software capability that it's word searchable. You could, you know, search a year, a student's name, you could put in minutes, it'll, it'll bring up everything identified minutes in all these boxes, and then you could request, you know, the boxes that are needed.
Who are you?
Five men.
I think you made a comment about thinking long in relation to the annex building. That's obviously something that we're going to be looking to do as we gear up for the strategic plan. That's something that we're, we're planning to prepare for the strategic plan. So that'll be something that we're, we're looking at and getting ready for. We had our financing plan meeting on last night, and that was a topic that came up. So those types of things are absolutely things we want to look at. It's smart and it's good use of our money, might cost a little bit more now, helps us plan, save money in the future. Those are the types of things that we're looking for. And most importantly, we're looking for feedback from the public, the process form, the deck, or ideas, the ideas that you had about the annex building that will come into play, that'll all be incorporated into the plan. So we're, it's a ways away, but you're going to hear about it from me periodically, because I'm really excited to get started into that. If it's not a good plan, we're just kind of, you know, the leaf blowing in the wind. Thank you.
Okay, so any other board member comments or our super representatives? Speak now.
It's only agenda.
On agenda. Comment here.
What? How just to say about.
Okay. All right, so that will bring us to a verbal consent agenda items. So I can have a motion. Present in the section. The other? Big, yeah. And, all right, any items for discussion? Steve.
Ms. Jesus.
Yes.
Mr. Parker, yes. Ms. Rockham.
Yes.
Ms. Zepka.
Yes.
Ms. Sago.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Wild.
Yes.
Vice President Hellman.
Yeah.
And President Lake.
Yes.
Motion carries on consent agenda.
Thank you. Just a reminder to the public that just because we don't have comments tonight doesn't mean that we have not heard and discussed and questioned these comments. We do have multiple meetings back and forth. So just a reminder regarding that. This is to our administrator boards.
Good evening. It's good to see the board of education, it's good to see the public, it's good to see people who are watching from home. It's a, it feels like it was a long time ago that we, it was only two weeks, it was fourteenth day, right? Open school, we welcome back the children, we've done all the things that go over getting a very, very busy public school system often going. It's been a fantastic, fantastic two weeks. A variety of just things I want to mention to the public who was up here tonight. First things first, I made the point today to visit the ACS cafeteria during lunchtime. I walked through cafeteria, I had a chance to see what was offered to the students. I did the same for LMS several, last week, I did the same for LHS. I had a chance to purchase breakfast at LHS and to purchase lunch over to LMS. I didn't have a chance to purchase lunch here today, it was a rather quick visit, but I always like to, food is an important part of the child's experience at school. And I just want to comment, compliment Machios for what they have out there. I saw, I saw fresh food, I saw fresh fruit, I saw a variety of choices. I saw students interacting with Machios employees very, very nicely. So I think that was a very good thing for me to do. I know that that's an important thing for the families, you know, one of your three meals takes place here. So I think it's good for me to put my eyes on that and sort of credit to them for taking care of that. You should all receive tonight either a pad of the radio or it's going to come inside the digest version of Parent Square. Is that I'm having four coffee and teas with the superintendent. Those are right around the corner. The dates of those are going to be October eighteenth at six thirty right in this room, December twenty-first at the middle school cafeteria, March nineteenth at the little theater at the high school. And again, I'm back here at Annecy Scott School, the school cafeteria. I want to point out to the community just board, it's a very, very informal conversation. We will have coffee and tea, so please RSVP for that. So when we have that catered by Machios, that we have the right amount of food here. It's designed to be very informal, I'll give an update, but it's more about me listening to the members of the public over here. It's not a conversation. Nothing grand, nothing will be announced, nothing serious. It's an opportunity for me to sit in the same room with our, our parents, with our teachers, and whoever wants to come and please, board member, you're invited to. I've done successfully in other places and I've really enjoyed it. There's an RSVP link up there. Right now, I have five people coming so far, so five of you are going to be here, so I'll order some more, but that will grow and that will remind the community along the way. I want to thank Ms. Song and Ms. Williams of our translators for helping me create the Korean as well as Skynet version of the flyer. We had that put together there. I want to mention we had our first back to school night at the high school last Thursday night. We have our second one at LMS tomorrow night and ACS the week after. I want to give a special comment to Jamie Sclafane, she's our public health officer. She arranged for there to be a wellness fair. That will, again, it was at the high school, will be here, will get me at ACS. So thank you, Matt. Thank you to our teachers for their preparation. Thank you to our, our, our student helpers that were there that evening to help as they can. Today, an event of Leonia Day at LHS, which has been a fantastic afternoon. We just left there, came running in, food trucks, music, fantastic experience. The board members may want to comment on that, so I'll keep my comment short. As a lead up, as a lead up to the, to the, I think we have staff spirit day for our three schools and nothing more like some good friendly competition. And so the school that had the highest percentage of staff members wearing Leonia gear was going to be able to go home tomorrow and then on Thursday with the students, you daily Friday with the students. Tomorrow and Thursday, they would go home a little bit earlier than usual, and that would be sort of the challenge, that would be the, the prize. Well, wouldn't you know, it was a hundred percent for all three schools. I wouldn't want to be the one person who forgot and went right to ninety percent. They, they would get what we call a blanket party, we don't want that for anybody. And so as a result of that, we had a chance, we had all three, I told the staff members today, it was really very nice. We have photos of the Dr. Caramanos, who's our Instagram influencer. And I'm sure some of the photos we've received, that all three schools spontaneously took staff photos in front of the schools. So that was a really, really nice, a nice thing for our staff and credit to them for being so involved in it. It was a very, very nice, good feeling. We, I attended the library board meeting last week, you know, I sit on the library board to vote for Dr. Caramanos. Very nice to be there to, to meet other members of the library board, to talk out loud about how we can help support them. And I, and what you will find if we talk about this, just while you and I talk about it, is that we're going to use Parent Square for those community organizations that have a benefit to our students and their families. We're going to, we're going to get information out there, the library offerings for September will be one of those things that we'll send out there. Here's an important date I, I want to say out loud and I'm going to say it a lot, is the date of October third. October third, and I'm going to mention it tonight, it'll go into Parent Square, I'll say it multiple times, we're going to practice our inclement weather alert system. Right? And so if it, if it ever snows this winter, we want to let our families know, we do a, a direct alert to Parent Square. We're going to practice that, it's probably going to be at nine thirty in the morning on October third. We will notify the community multiple times before we have it, we'll, we'll say it's a test, I've been telling the board tonight about it. But October third at nine thirty in the morning, we'll be practicing our inclement weather system. I also want to mention I had the chance to attend the ACS campfires. Quite a tradition here, I made it to two of the three of them, Dr. Caramanos came with me also. Wonderful Jackie Almeida, our school counselor at ACS, had a wonderful program for the children, great way to get started, so I was glad to be part of that. Tonight I was interviewed by both the Leonian for a piece that Reagan is writing. And Emily Interviews appears to be a new Instagram page, I see smiling of our student representatives. And she interviewed me and I promised, she said she'd give me a good edit, so hopefully. I don't want to be too Instagram famous. And Dr. Caramos, I'll turn to you in a second to talk about the High Impact Tutoring Grant. We'll talk about that for a moment, we're applying for that. But I just want to mention that as I've walked around the high school the last few days, both of us have noticed as we teach at the school in the morning, seeing the kids, it's wonderful to see all of the club flyers that are going up on the walls now. Whether it be the chess club, the helping club, the gay street awareness, the liars club, a lot of, a lot of poetry club writing. It's great to see so many activities and interests being supported by our teachers and put on by our students. And right now, we're, we're in it now, right? We're, we're the second full week of school, schedules are running, buses are going, food service is on, like now we're, now we're rolling. And I'm very, 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 very grateful for the hard work that went into the opening of school for our administrators who worked around the clock to get us there, for our teachers who had strong openings, for our families for having our students coming to our students, really, really strong opening, and I look forward to the future. So thank you. Are there any questions I can answer for the board? Dr. Caramos, I am back tutoring grant.
Sure. So we are. Thank you. We are applying for the New Jersey Department of Education Learning Acceleration High Impact Tutoring Grant. You'll see on the board agenda, under finance, we are, the board is approving to accept and submit the application. We are applying to serve our students from grades three to twelve in language arts and math, focusing on, in language arts, focusing on language development and defining and understanding meanings of words. And in math, we are focusing on number sets and fluency and modeling and reasoning in mathematics. Students will be identified through a process. We are using two of the approved vendors on the New Jersey DOE approved vendor list. We're using Sylvan Learning Center, which we, we've been using, so we know we have a good relationship and we receive good feedback from our students. And we've, we've seen success from that program, as well as proximity learning to do virtual tutoring for students, more so in the upper grades. So that way students in the upper grades don't have to miss, miss, you know, other activities or other, you know, sports. That way they have the opportunity to kind of log into these virtual classes that will happen usually at night or on weekends, and they can attend, that won't disrupt their other obligations. So we are applying for that and hopefully we'll hear back in a few weeks if we get accepted for that grant.
Is the grant similar to the one like dollar wise that we had before? Like the Sylvan program?
So we, the allocation we received for this grant was fifty-eight thousand. The one, the Sylvan grant we were using before, that was through Title One, so that's, that's a bigger, definitely a bigger number. But, you know, the, the structure is split, the grant really kind of wants school districts to maximize the number of students they are reaching. So we, it's more with the Title One, we were giving students twenty hours of instruction. We're trying to make sure that students get twenty hours, but you know, we have to comply with the, the grant. Rules and that, but so we'll see, we'll start working that out. The deadline is far to submit, so we'll get it in.
So Mr. Kama's.
So I have three topics. One is kind of a repeat, I just want to kind of bring the community, just, just remind everyone, all family members to complete the lunch program application for the new twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Thank you. For the twenty-three, twenty-four school year is highly recommended. Please just go onto your Genesis parent portal and you could do it all electronically. If you're having trouble with the parent portal, please reach out to your, your child's school's principal's office or the district's business office to receive a hard copy or, you know, further help with, with the parent portal. The key thing why it's important is because that low income application, if you, if you happen to submit one in the prior year, and, you know, currently there's, there's what they call a dirty school day carryover benefit. So if your child is currently, you know, getting, you know, eligible for meals because they qualified last year and you didn't submit a new application, that dirty day carryover benefit runs out. So it, it gives parents kind of a great spirit to, you know, submit an application. So it's important to get it in before that, that dirty day, school day benefit runs out. This way there's no eligibility change depending on if there is, you know, based on your, your new income threshold. So please, we urge, you know, all families to submit that, that form. Another topic, just to kind of give, you know, everyone, all board members in the community an update, is the capital projects update, which you'll see on the agenda relating to the twenty-two, twenty-three capital projects. Pretty much there is two projects that we're in the process of completing, and you'll see that there is a withdrawal from the capital reserve on this agenda for both projects. The reasoning for that is timing, because it overlaps two fiscal years. So we have to, once, once six thirty hits, any unexpendanted funds relating to those projects, if they weren't uncompleted, have to go back. If there is no purchase order, you know, secured, and then we have to reappropriate it to board resolution, as well as any additional costs. Relating to twenty-three, twenty-four capital projects, part of the, the budget, the state has tentatively improved one of the projects that the district submitted for a RON grant funding, which is relating to the ACS root project. So that's tentatively, I haven't received the final letter from the state yet. So per direction by the state, they said, you know, you can't act on anything until you receive that letter. With the other remaining non-approved RON grant projects, the goal is basically administration will review those projects based on the needs, based on the financial capability with the capital reserve, because now we have to fully fund it. We don't have that, that RON grant to offset any of that cost. So we'll bring it to the finance committee at the next meeting in October with our recommendation. And then if any projects need to get canceled, you know, there'll, there'll be a board resolution depending on, on the funding. The last item for capital projects, which is also part of the, was part of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, was the FEMA mitigation projects. So you'll see also on this agenda that the district has, is in the process of working with the architect and Brian Edix to kind of move those, those FEMA mitigation projects that have been approved through the two FEMA mitigation projects that were rejected based on cost effectiveness, determined that, you know, based on the repair cost to mitigate it, it doesn't, it's not cost effective to, to have that approved. So FEMA rejected those two. So those two FEMA rejected projects, there is an agenda to cancel that local match, which was, which was ten percent, and that's going to go back to capital reserve. All right. The last piece of information is health benefit rate increase, which, you know, was a topic relating to the budget twenty-three, twenty-four. This was actually just came out today, so it was not discussed during the finance committee yesterday. But I would like to just, you know, announce that the state has approved and released the rates, the rate increases, which is roughly relating to the Leonia School District, since we're part of the state health benefit plan. Any employee in, in the, in the direct ten, direct fifteen plan, we're looking at eleven point eight percent increase, you know, across the board relating to the RX with medical coverage. Any employee that's in the New Jersey EHP plan, it's about almost three percent increase. And any employee that's in the Garden State Health Benefit Plan is about twelve point two percent increase. So the next, my next goal is to have our, our health benefit broker kind of put together like an unweighted cost increase to kind of determine where Leonia kind of sits this year with a, with a health benefit increase. And depending on where that looks, we might bring to the finance committee, you know, recommendation to kind of, you know, go out to the marketplace and see where we could get, based on private carriers, any increases. You know, how competitive that, that will look compared to the state, moving out of the state and going to a private carrier.
Thank you, Ru. Okay, that brings us to our committee reports. Start with that man.
We haven't met yet, but my plan is for everybody to be here in person today to set our, our meeting, our cadence for the year.
I think it's been very busy, so. Appreciate that. Okay, so next is financing planning. Eric Spoh, Paul Mettunder. I think all of you here for me as well. But most of what Eric covered in his report was, a lot of it was discussed at our meeting last night. We also set our meetings through the end of the calendar year. We spent some time also reviewing the bus placement schedule, the impact of the grants we received for the electric buses and planning, appropriate planning for replacement of them so that we don't get stuck with clump so buses or replacements of those. We're also reviewing the potential for keeping some of the either propane or diesel, not replacing all electric in the event that it loses power in the, in the district for an extended period. And for some reason, you know, we need busing, so that's part of the considerations there as well. We did spend some time additionally speaking about food services, negative balances. And that, and I know it's not a fun topic, but it is one that impacts the budget for this whole district. So, you know, we're just looking at options for how we can try to help mitigate and get the message out to parents that may not be aware that they have negative balances. But just looking at exploring how we can be good stewards for our budgets and to help families that, that may need it. I think Eric mentioned free reduced. Uh, we absolutely encourage families to apply for that if possible, um if they need it. And um a few other things discussed, we did actually also spend some time speaking about the strategic plan, um essentially in a very brief nutshell. This year, you're going to hear a lot from me about it, hopefully from all the board members as well, just in terms of getting the message out um that we are getting ready to do this. Um, next year will really be, the next school year um will be when we're pushing for the actual public meetings, scheduled public meetings, where we'll be gathering information that'll be used to help create the actual strategic plan, um with the goal of adopting this strategic plan in June or July of twenty-twenty-five. So that's just really briefly what that, that, and the, the timing looks like for that. So there will be a lot of time for you to hear more and learn more about the entire process. There will be a lot of publications, a lot of, a lot of social media posts, we're definitely very busy with that. Um, and uh you can expect to hear a lot more about it as we move forward. That's essentially that, in addition to what Mr. Kalasich discussed, to what we reviewed by us last night. So that brings us to community relations and communications.
Uh, so we haven't actually met yet, uh but our next meeting, so we're going to be meeting right before the first board meeting of every month. So our next meeting is October seventeenth, our first meeting of the fall.
Okay, and uh that brings us to Paulson. Is there any, I know we didn't meet, but maybe you want to discuss with the emails that were going on?
Uh, okay, um, sure. Okay, um, we did meet on the, um, was it last week?
Yes, it was last week.
And uh the, we discussed about like policy five five one two, which is our student behavior. I think that it was, uh, I heard that it was the public comments about the last meeting, which I was collapsed for some reason. Anyway, so um we did a review again and then I kind of understand that, uh, we kind of understand that why it was uh kind of revisited. And then we sort of kind of sorted out and what's going on and then so try to um the result, the whatever the problem is concerned, um we've got some um changes, so it will be um on the Zepford, the Zand uh next meeting. So we'll see that and then to find out what those are. We're basically, you know, same thing, but just like in the way to kind of um the presenting, presenting, we found out that way, way to presentation is kind of a bit, you know, the problem, so we kind of fixed that as the little bit difference. So there was that and also um the, there was a weird internal, we have some on the, you know, as we're going on, uh the um um, the high school, uh the guidelines and then, you know, um, the, uh, yeah, um, found out that, um, I mean, uh, basically the policy itself is that uh the government, it just, we have, we just give the uh some sort of decision, I mean, just a direction of the uh um, the, the school district and then we especially, we don't really touch the guidelines as much because the guidelines is really um, the, you know, um, the, the, the audit admin's on the job, and they, they can do, they can basically how we run the um um, the, our district and then based on policy, policy just assess the interaction. That's the, you know, uh, it's important, but um we need to, we can really discuss in like policy as well. But that's the electronic stature, um, you know, the guidelines we talked about and the policies and then that's it.
Thank you. And so just safety secure.
Yeah, we're meeting again uh next Wednesday, um and we did have our meetings for uh the remainder of the fall.
So that's the same.
The food, um, Dr. Carmannas and I have been kind of emailing back and forth, um, haven't haven't connected on it yet, but we were kind of discussing how to work with the wellness committee and the green team and thinking about the direction the food committee is going to take.
Okay, thank you. Um, and that brings us to our student representatives. Hannah, Emily, or Rebecca.
Hello, so the, we had a pep rally on the first day and it was a huge turnout, the seniors won. And it was a little bit chaotic, but all the pep rallies kind of go like that. Um, currently for sports updates, we have the boys and girls soccer, who won against Ridgefield last week. Um, and currently we, for the most recent update, the boys soccer team is winning to New Milford by two to zero. Um, tonight, yeah, and then the girls JV tennis team also won. Um, this morning for updates on lanyards, we got new lanyards and new ID cards that were distributed to all students during homeroom. And the Minga app has been highly enforced schoolwide. And while it is a little bit, it's successful, but there are certain things in that should be fixed. Um, sometimes I feel like it's because so many students aren't on it at one time and like the wifi and everything. But sometimes it won't approve of certain bathroom, like permissions, like sometimes it says you can't go out, it's like glitchy. And regarding the, how schools should start later, we talked about it with our friends and like the school community. And most students are in favor, but we, but we believe that conflicts would arise because of other schools for sports. Like we can't kind of, if we start later and we end later, then that would kind of interfere with schools' games after school. And that's about it.
And I just want to give like a really big thank you to everyone who has. I just wanted to give thank you all the students we have, to especially to Dr. Carmannas and Dr. Gaitens. You guys are always there um in the mornings and I really think that kids can feel your presence and like your want to be there all the time. And whoever is in that line costume all the time, um, we are aligned, sorry. I'm really thankful and I think the students really enjoyed it, especially the posters that we put up on the first day of school all around social media. So I think it was, um, we're just really grateful for you guys.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the updates. I think the information on the late start is actually really important. First up, you're not going to find anything. And if, I mean, if, if you can, Dr. Gaines can look into the concerns of all and.
Yeah, the thing we're working on, I, we have a meeting with uh Mr. Kalasich, Mr. Service, um, about the various topics. That's one of the items that's on there, and another thing I'll just point out if I may. So the, the late start thing is interesting, right? Because we talked at this last meeting about that, that biologically makes a lot of sense. Um, what I was thinking of, and, and this is more for, for general consideration, for the conversation, is one thing I picked up on is that our school start time is beneficial for staff members of travel here because of the morning traffic. And there's a, there's, you, you cross this magic time where what is usually fifteen minute drive is now a thirty-five minute drive. And I, and I think that we're in a unique situation where despite virtual, but I even hope myself now, like, so I try to be in my car. Like, if I want to make it to the front of the school by, by seven fifteen, I want to be in my car at my house by six thirty, right? Now, that's my time to get in the car. If that seventeen became seven forty-five, that six thirty would probably stay six thirty, right? And that's, I mean, that's the, the, the dynamic out there. Um, and so I just, I think that's a consideration to happen. I don't want to, which is back on the idea of the school start time, but that's an issue that we have to work through, right? And I, and I, I, I will point out for the purpose of the strategic planning, I think that's an excellent topic that, that can be explored and can be discussed, right? And uh, I just wanted to mention that point. That occurred to me as I was, I was sitting in traffic this morning, like, holy cow. If I had to go two minutes later, it would be, I'd be leaving home at the same time, which I enjoy doing, but that would be, I don't know how much more better it would get. That's just my, my very short two cents on the, on the topic that we will talk a lot more about.
That was very insightful, thinking about the interrelationship between all the schools as well, the, well, that's great. Okay, so, one, she brings us all the way to new business. Okay, if they can accept this, if they can do this all at once, or if they can do it all at once, okay, right? And I have a motion and a second for new business, motion, bring it in a second. And any items? Does anybody wish to speak about any of these items in closing? Okay, so you know, general votes. Ms. Dana Suss?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Rockout?
Yes.
Ms. Sisepka?
Yes.
Ms. Sago?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Wild?
Yes.
Vice President Noman? And President Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries on new business. And that brings us to our second public comment period. Um, on, any items pertaining to Leonia Public School District, please step up to the podium, state your name and address if you're seeing this happening.
She's a law student, she's ordering English. Yeah, I'm doing this for a law class, yeah. Um, so my name's Melisago, uh, three fifty-nine Glenwood Avenue. And I had a question on the grants, specifically the high impact tutoring and the busing grants. So specifically, what kind of grants are these? Are these um local grants, state grants, independent grants? Are they block grants? And also, how do you keep up with these grant opportunities? How do you find out about the ones that are on federal level and state level and if they're applicable or not? What standards do you use? Thank you. Sorry, I know it's a longer question.
Something's our grants administrator.
Yeah, it's part of my job. Um, so the High Impact Tutoring Grant is a state grant that was provided to the state through COVID. It's federal grant, my apologies, it's a federal grant, um, that was divided to, that was, so we were given the allocation of fifty-eight thousand by the state. So it's a federal grant that the state then took and divided amongst the school districts based on needs. Um, a lot of the grants that we do apply for are based um either through federal grant funding or through state level funding. Um, we receive grants all the time. Um, and then, you know, we kind of choose which ones make the most sense for us based on our demographics, based on um the academic needs of our students, social, emotional, and the behavioral needs of our students, and also what um makes sense for our, our students at the time when the grants are available. So that is why we, you know, move forward with the High Impact Tutoring Grant. And then the busing grid, that is where Mr. Tom Savage, he, he specializes in the busing grid.
So one, one of the things that we looked at with um our transportation coordinator when it relates to busing is ways to improve our bus fleet. Like President Lee indicated, we, you know, we're looking to always phase in, phase out buses, um, while looking to kind of preserve, you know, climate and um, you know, clean energy. Uh, so when this came, you know, we, we get all this information, you know, passed through different associations that we're a part of. Um, so once this was brought to our attention that there is a New Jersey DEP grant that's out there, which this is kind of, it's similar to uh the High Impact, it's a federal grant passed through the state. This, I believe, was relating to that VW emissions um case that they basically, you know, paid, you know, the federal government in admission violations. So this was passed through, uh, passed through, through the state. So we applied for it, um, you know, because we were, we were in need, our buses were at the end of their life, which is regulated by the state. So once we determined that, you know, we have to replace these buses anyway, you know, let's take advantage of that EV, uh, this EV grant that we could, you know, that the, the state will uh compensate the districts to replace, you know, pro, uh, diesel bus with, you know, an EV bus. So we applied for the grant and, you know, through uh, you know, paperwork, the state approved us for seven EV buses and chargers. Uh, you know, to make that happen and kind of move forward and, and, you know, EV, clean energy. Uh, but like President Lee said, you know, we also got to factor in, you know, what is the long-term plan, should, you know, cost, uh, issues. Uh, so, you know, right now, we're still new, these, we don't have any EV buses, so as we get these seven buses in, we'll reassess, you know, the benefits and, you know, does it outweigh, you know, the cost that it imposes onto the district? You know, should we, you know, stick with EV, what's the direction of the state, the federal government? So we look at all these, you know, areas, you know, how this, you know, the DOE, all these factors.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who should speak? Arthur, please, sir.
Uh, Arthur, one twenty-five, we're all these, a couple of comments. One, the grant money is really, you know, money we give to the government and then they give it back to us because they don't think that we have spent our own money. Because mostly our money that we give and then we get it back. Um, I have a question regarding snow days. I hope we, I, I've been following it. Do we still have snow days? And I hope we're going to give, maybe throw a bone during a snowy day. If we have one, let the kids stay home instead of putting them on the, you know, the, the stay at home and the online stuff because snow days are precious. Uh, they should be retained, can my opinion? Regarding the eleven percent, I think it was eleven percent increase that, that Eric said in benefits, health benefits. I was like, in, in this, on this agenda, and then the four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars a month we're paying, is that anticipating the eleven percent? Or is that not anticipating? Are we going to get another fifty thousand dollars on top of that? Is it going to be five hundred thousand dollars a month or five hundred and twenty thousand dollars? That's, that's incredible. You have to have it negotiated. I didn't realize that, but it's just, it's just the number, just choking. And regarding um, uh, Brian disappointed me today. He came, he came in your suit, and I thought, sure, you will come into your slice today. You walk through that door, I just dropped. I mean, I thought you'd be out there running around with a plan, you know? It's like, it's kind of like the Lion King in Simba, you know, the, the king of the, of the, of the jungle. You're like the Simba, and when you show up, no, the kids all know it. It's like, you know, when you're a performer, whether you're in the, the band, you know, you're on play or whatever you're doing, you know, you're an athlete doing something, kids always want to be, you want to, somebody wants to see it. Like, you're tree falling in the jungle, in the woods, you know, nobody hears it. But when you're there, it gets attention. Everyone wants to perform for somebody. So when the superintendent shows up and the board, people know it, they notice it, and it gets them excited, that people are paying attention to what they're doing. So I think it's very good, so I applaud that. And that is all I have, thank you.
There's a, there's a staff photo taken at the, at LHS.
Do you have another question?
What's that?
Does Bella have another question?
I, I don't know. I told her she can go get an estimate she wants, because she asked me a question, I didn't know the answer to it.
Yeah, wait for Brian to answer it.
Like, if you wanted to talk, if you wanted to ask another question, yeah.
It had something to do with my initial question, if I'm allowed to say that. Okay. You don't have to say your name again, not again. Okay, so I believe in your response, you said something regarding um an admissions case regarding the federal grants being passed through the state. Was that like an actual, like civil suitcase or just a case as in like an instance? I'm not sure.
Yeah, it was the fullness of admissions.
How is that related to what I asked? Like, just curious, because I heard the mention of a case, and so was that case applicable in this?
Same, that was done.
Yeah, that's why the grant was so fun.
Okay.
So in Arthur's case, that's really wasn't taxpayer money. That was corporate money. So we like that money a little better, right? Same green money, right?
Okay, yeah, that, that was it, thank you.
So in regards to the, the snow days, I, I want to know how much these young ladies paid you to have you pay the snow days for a meeting. Um, I, I will tell you this, is the, I, I too am a firm believer in the, in the well-placed snow day is a delightful experience, right? The day often, and um, and I, and just to clarify for the, for the board and the public, the, uh, the exchange of snow days, like virtual snow days, like a that's, that's gone, like the, the state does not allow that anymore. So a snow day is a snow day, is a snow day. That being said, I fully expect to be Instagrammed at, tweeted at, added at it. Dr. Gaines, look in your soul, think of the children, cancel school. Um, I firmly expect that to happen the minute a single snowflake drops from the sky. Yeah, I think, well, well, the other, the counterbalance at that point is that, that the parents very often have jobs to go, right? And so it's a, and I will tell you that it is the, um, the, as a superintendent, the calling of a snow day is the single, and I see our legal counsel nodding his head. It is the single most miserable part of my job. That either, if it's a, if it's a massive big white blanket coming in, it's a no-brainer, I'm a hero. But if it's like, you know, ice at six oh five, that might be snow, might be rain, and I make a call, I guarantee you that I will anger half of the population and half will love me. I guarantee that. But that is the, the price of, of leadership, right, Arthur? In regard to sweatshirt, I want to point out that for the, uh, the group photo that was taken at the high school today, I was wearing a Leona High School sweatshirt that was supplied to me. Um, as I was dressing for work this morning, I had the, the, my father whispering in my ears saying that, um, you're a grown-up, wear a suit and tie to work. And I couldn't do it, except on a Friday, in which it's Leonia Day. So, thank you. do it, except on a Friday, in which it's Leonia Day, so, thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, Steve, uh, what are his support comments?
I don't know everything. Um, I don't need to go into specifics, but I do need to, um, make sure we have a discussion about lashing calendar dates. We've got one that actually, um, uh, this Thursday, I almost didn't get a forum for my board event meeting in Edgewater, um, because one of our board members is the parent of a middle school child, and it's back-to-school night, so there's a couple other things, um, that we, just if we could come back to, to take a look at it, we, we don't have much posted in advance what the board meetings are. Um, and then for us ourselves, October twenty-fourth, I think we have to change, I think that's in the middle of.
That it been changed?
Yeah, oh, you don't have, our next board meeting is October seventeenth. Thanks.
No, that's on the community calendar?
Yes.
Also, there's no October twenty-fourth meeting?
Yeah, that was done before the community calendar, yeah. That is done, that was done my last, the, in, in, in June.
So it takes, twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth, so the seventeenth?
We merged the seventeenth, yeah.
Tenth, so, tenth and twenty-four got merged, you know, the board to Gassman and Division. All right, yeah. Actually, we just recently dropped, um, the document that has the latest dates, that's been our Google Drive.
And also the, if you go to the district website, the, the, they draw there also.
And in our parents' work.
Are we still doing it over time?
I'm sure it's drawn somewhere else, but it's in the area.
That's really helpful.
Thanks for coming in for joining me with that.
Christina, any other comments?
That was it, thank you.
I actually realized, I, I did want to call, uh, I do have comments on to the gentleman, it's under Finance K, A and B, just wanted to acknowledge and thank SAC program, um, as well as ACS Women's School Association for the donations they've made to the school district. Obviously, both of those organizations are hugely important to the school district, uh, one, obviously, for our working families, um, they greatly appreciate the SAC program, and obviously for the hard-working, um, parents, family, members that work in the ACS Women's School Association as well, are very appreciative of the donations they've made. Thank you.
And then we'll be sent formal thank you letters by me up there.
Yes. So, um, first, let's start piggybacking with the student that said, um, just the initial coming back to school and, and the energy and, um, you know, the signs that you put up and the mascot, it was well-received by the public, it just had everybody excited to be back. Follow that up with today, the Leonia Day, it was an amazing day, I took my daughter, spent over an hour, watched the girls volleyball, well-attended, pretty much packed, couldn't even get a seat in there, they won, um, then moved on to soccer and tennis and all of those, it was just great having your presence there, the games and Zanti, the food trucks, the music. Actually, I didn't even realize I was in Leonia, like, I know we love these things, like, we show up, but this much excitement and joy, like, you don't know what you're missing until you have something, and I just want to continue this, you're setting a high bar, and I thank everybody and the students for showing up, just continue this, you know, this is what we like, and this is the energy we want to keep, keep the morale of the teachers, I saw them all wearing their shirts, walking back and forth from the middle school to the high school, they were just excited to be there, so, I, I thank you for all that.
Thank you, I appreciate that, right, thank you, I just want to point out, it's a team effort, right? And the, and the Leonia Day at LHS, that was born at the high school level, that was born with the students, that was with Mr. Calendar, Mr. Service, and that was born especially with Mr. Muller, um, who did a tremendous, tremendous job with the food trucks and the DJ and the t-shirts and all that, so, so thank you for the kind words, but I have to insist that it's the, it's everybody pulling in the same direction, yes, and I'll, and I'll pass that along to them when I see it.
We are going to pass the policy, no exciting events on the night of board meetings. Try to, we've overtaken it. We won't move to meeting tonight.
I was dragged out.
We're not dragged out, for the record.
My own, my own bill.
All good to say.
Yeah.
Any other board member comments?
I just wanted to second, Joe, I'm sure everyone, um, does, I, you really, I feel like I've heard so much about this, you really do feel, um, just a change this year, there's a lot of school spirit, and I think very necessary after some tough years with the pandemic, and, um, it's kind of interesting in my house, because my girls graduated in twenty twenty-one, and they always think their younger brother, who's now a junior, has everything easier and everything better, and they're like, they were focused back week, and they're like, really? Now we get all the school spirit? Of course! So, caused some angst in my house, but, all of a sudden, so.
So we'll cancel the plans for the water park?
Yeah.
You're saying the water park?
No, 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 okay. Yeah, it's about the bathroom, um, the, one thing, I just sort of noticed that, um, every time I visited, um, the bathroom design, uh, the, LHS time time, also the LM's time time, I've visited it, and, uh, the, uh, someone looked at, I have a special issue, I, I think there's an issue with the cleanliness, uh, it's because of the, you know, I don't know if that is room, but I'm like, you know, the boys' room, I always like, can smell it. I, I think that also, like, it relates to the, uh, you know, how does it, like, we have some issue with the, like, bathroom, like, last year's and all that, I think that could be related to that as well, too. It, it's, it's exciting, like, a few years ago, I mean, the, uh, when, uh, the New York City, when there's some issue with, uh, and the street, that's, uh, like, all a bunch of things, they're just like, uh, clear of the, all of the, uh, graphic graffiti, and then all the, like, um, uh, crime rates are lower, I think, like, with the, this is, uh, this thing is conserved, like, this one, too, if, if you link, um, the, cleaned our bathroom a little bit cleaner, just to answer, like, I feel the, uh, with the soaps in places and everything, and also, the, you know, the bathrooms are, uh, feels clean, and then there were students can, uh, you know, they use the bathroom a little bit better, so, you know, um, the eye kind of, um, I don't know, this is just that maybe, uh, we can, uh, keep our bathroom, uh, cleaner, cleaner, that way, uh, we can prove a lot of this, I think.
Yeah, just piggyback on that, I think, are you talking to the high-traffic bathrooms? Because like today, when I was at the volleyball game, that's a high traffic, so garbage cans been overflowed, sink was backed up, or are you talking about, like, all of the bathrooms?
Yeah, you're talking about school bathrooms.
Because when you have a five hundred people or three hundred people at one time.
Right, right, yeah, you, uh, well, if it is during the day, I understand, but I'm like, you know, I see that the, uh, you know, uh, for example, um, the, uh, after school day, that's like, basically the after the, like, school, uh, yeah, and then, I mean, I think it's pretty clean, but I'm like, smells of that is still there, so, it can, it smells, and like, you know, uh, nobody feels that it's clean, it, it's exciting that, like, you know, your home bathroom doesn't smell anything, right? So I hope that, like, you know, a, a, any, any type of bathroom, I, I kind of like, you know, expect that, like, you know, cleanliness that way, that's what I'm talking about, and also, you know, they often, uh, I, I, I spoke to, like, one of them about the, the student, and then when they try to, like, use a soap, there's always empty, and they, when they try to, like, you know, the, using the, um, the, what is it, um, the paper, uh, the paper is a bad one, not, not, not the toilet paper, I'm talking about, like, the head papers, not a bad one, all that, so, um, the, uh, maybe it's because of the students that they, uh, kind of overuse it, and maybe that's reason, or maybe, uh, the previous day, uh, when they, um, you know, they, they cleaned it, but they didn't, uh, fill all those, uh, on time and all that, so, I think, those, those type of things, I think, like, will, um, they change our, uh, students' like, bathroom behavior, I think.
I will, I'll figure it out, yeah. Just wanted to get a note.
Oh, yes, please.
I'm a little sick, so I said a little odd, that's why, um, but just to piggyback on all of the bathroom talk, I know specifically the north wing, um, there's a big issue in the bathroom, um, specifically the air dryer that we use, um, does not work at all, and there's some paper towels to be used, so oftentimes I have to go in the stall and take toilet paper to dry my hands, and then the first stall, when you walk into that bathroom for the girls' restroom, the door is not level, so you actually can't lock the door at all, which makes that stall completely useless, um, I would often, like, lift up the door, then shove the lock in, and then have to do, lift it up, and then the same exactly, just to use that stall, obviously because it's not, use it with the cleanness, I would just do that myself, um, but the whole point of those three stalls, that we can even use one of them, um, and also the handicap one, um, is the last one, which obviously is not the preferred one to use sometimes, um, and even specifically the ladies' room, there are definitely messages which aren't kind, um, it's more of a character issue than a maintenance issue, obviously, um, it's also, like, just to know the ladies' bathroom specifically.
And I just wanted to add that I actually brought all these issues up in school last year to some of the people, um, and it was never resolved, so, um, yeah, I just want to mention one more thing is, in the girls' bathroom, I think it's really important that where you put your waste is covered, sealed, not a tin bucket where everyone can see, because a lot of times, there's gonna be, you know, things you don't want to see, so if the board could, could support on that too.
Thank you very much for that. Yes. Any, any other board comments? See, now, do we have any matters for the session? Okay, okay, so we do, thank you, can I have a motion for adjournment? Hannah, second, Isaac, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or objections? Very much.
So for the, uh, board meeting, it's gonna be new teachers coming in, the principal introduce them, we're then gonna go to a break for about fifteen minutes.